Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Move right to the first order of business. Could I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
Move approval.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 28th, July 5th, and July 12th meeting?
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have motion in the second. Any further discussion? There being none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Announcements, we have a couple. Mr. Muzikar, can I do these two first?
Yeah, please.
Okay, the annual National Night Out is scheduled for Tuesday, August 2nd, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. At the Shrewsbury Police Department, residents throughout the town of Shrewsbury are invited to join over 38 million neighbors across 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide to participate in National Night Out. National Night Out is an annual community-building campaign that promotes strong police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer and create more caring places to live and work. Together, we are making it happen. Additional information will follow as we get closer to the event, and we hope to see you there. Last year, this was very well-attended. I'd encourage people to take some time, take a walk up there. It was a good event. It's really nice to bring kids up there. The Community Preservation Committee is having a workshop, and that's related to the community preservation applications that are going to be open. They're open now. Applications for funding, for funds that have been raised through the Community Preservation Act that was passed last year. It's a rather long process, and so they're starting, literally, to make sure that these things are ready if they're approved for the town meeting in May. They're going to have a workshop on August 1st to walk through the application process, the forms, and the deadlines. Join them at 7:00 p.m. in the Selectmen's Room at Town Hall. Bring you questions to discuss with the committee. Applicants who are unable to attend can reach the committee by email for assistance, and materials will be posted online. Product eligibility forms are due September 1st. That's only the first step. You don't have to have the information, the complete information for the project. Those are due a little bit later. If you need more information, reach out to the Planning and Economic Development Department. Okay, those are my two announcements. Mr. Muzikar, do you have something also that you'd like to add?
Yeah, a couple. One announcement, and then I can move into the Town Manager's Report. We just want to remind residents that we're touching base with all of them, kind of as we're in the middle of the strategic planning process. And we've scheduled a variety of different type of community engagement sessions that we're really asking and encouraging residents to join us in. We're having virtual sessions, in-person meetings, and then we'll also be at several events throughout the community, including National Night Out. The next virtual session is scheduled for Friday, August 5th, at 9:00 a.m., and the following one would be Monday, August 8th, at 7:00 p.m. And residents need to pre-register in advance, and that information is available through the Town Manager's Office. We're also operating a survey-based opportunity where residents don't have to attend a meeting and can still provide us feedback, and that's through our website of GetInvolvedShrewsbury.com. You can fill out a survey there. Finally, with regards to the in-person meetings, our first in-person meeting will be held at the Shrewsbury Public Library at 7:00 o'clock on Monday, August 1st. And the second will be held the following late morning at 10:45 a.m. on Tuesday, August 2nd, at the Shrewsbury Public Library. So those will be in-person meetings where you'll be able to engage with staff and our consultant. Those farmers' market events that we'll be at will include tomorrow night's event from 3:00 to 5:00. Food trucks this Thursday on July 28th from 4:30 to 6:30, and again, National Night Out from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 2nd. Then the following week, we'll be at the farmers' market on the 10th and the food trucks on the 11th. So plenty of opportunities to still engage, and we're really looking forward to residents joining any one of these variety of meetings and providing us feedback so we make sure we're on the right track. So...
Mr. Muzikar?
Yep.
If I might just add one more announcement. At our last meeting, we talked about our status with our D E I work, and we had talked about our drafting of a commitment statement from this board. The workshop that we had planned to have had to be rescheduled, so just wanted to publicly acknowledge that we're a little bit behind schedule, but we'll provide updates at the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, so move on. On the Town Manager's Report, he has just provided an update on COVID-19 cases as of, for the week ending July 22nd, 2022, there are 56 additional cases. So we, you know, are really staying in the range of, you know, anywhere from the upper 40s to the mid 50s on a weekly basis. So we ask residents to just please stay tuned in on that and take precautions as you may, especially in enclosed areas. So we're still seeing a number of cases each and every week, so I don't have anything additional this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, just to come back on your comments about rescheduling the meeting, but sometime in August, when everybody's not on vacation, we'll try to get another one back in.
Good point.
Okay, the next order of business, this is virtual, right, Taylor? Is the next one? What? Oh, public comment. The next order of business is public comment period, but we didn't have anybody sign up, right? So obviously, we won't be having that this evening. If people do want to come in to make public comment during the meeting, there are three-minute slots that are available. You contact the Manager's Office by Monday, the day before the meeting, and you can be put on the agenda and speak. Now we're in the sixth. Okay. We have a meeting with Attorney Trish Fonsworth on behalf of Massachusetts Fine Wines and Spirits LLC, DBA Total Wine Spirits Beer and More. We got an application for change of offices, directors, LLC managers to their Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store license. Ms. Attorney Fonsworth, you there?
I am virtually. Hopefully, you can see and hear me.
We can hear you. Obviously, you can hear us. Haven't seen you for a long time.
I know. It's been a while. I actually looked, it was last year for the change of manager, license manager. But this application here is just the entity itself, the LLC. We need to change a manager in the LLC. Mr. LaChapelle is no longer with the company, so Weaver Reebok is going to be the LLC manager. No other changes whatsoever.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? There's no change of... Mr. Sami, do you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question on the application for amendment on the change of officers. The proposed officer's stock or ownership interest, if I look at, talks about a 5% Class A membership for David and Robert Trone, the change of manager, and then Exhibit 3 for the trust ownership of the remaining amount. But is that a change from what it was before?
Nope, no change whatsoever. No, I think it's just the way the application reads. You're supposed to list all owners, even though there's no change.
Okay. Yeah, I just, on the next page, that's fine, just the next page, it talked about percentage of ownership, and a couple of the members didn't add zero, so that was the reason. Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. This is not a public hearing, so if there are no other questions, Attorney Fonsworth, do you have anything you want to add?
No, just thank you for your time.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve Massachusetts Fine Wines and Spirits LLC DBA Total Wine Spirits Beer and More's application for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers to their Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store license.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? There being none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. You're all set.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Yep, you also, take care. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled meeting, so we have to wait until 7:20 for that. So why don't we jump down to new business, Item 8, to review an act on the adoption of additional water use restrictions. Mr. Rowley is here this evening, and Mr. Holland. So, good evening, gentlemen. Mr. Rowley, would you...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dan Rowley, Water and Sewer Superintendent, thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to talk to the board, as the Board of Selectmen, and the Water Commissioners. As everyone's aware, we're in a drought. It's been a hot, dry summer, and, my computer's frozen, of course. We've been monitoring our water usage, we're monitoring environmental conditions, and we wanted to come before the board to talk about the designation made last week in Shrewsbury, or the central region of Massachusetts, putting us in a critical level drought. It's a Level 3, which the recommendation is to limit nonessential outdoor watering. And that was made just this past week on July 21st, and the recommendation is, obviously, minimize overall water use and stop all of nonessential outdoor watering. And what was a little bit concerning is, that is their recommendation, but we're obligated to follow our Water Management Act through Mass D E P. So we have calendar-trigger water use restrictions that we put in place every year. They start May 1st and go through September 30th, and it's the two days per week for the non-essential outdoor watering. But there's also a stream-trigger flow, and Tiffany, go to the next slide. As I was saying, it's two days per week, and that has been in place for quite a while. This is the first year since I've been here where the stream flow has actually gotten close to the trigger point, which is 1.9 cubic feet per second at the Quin-Segerman River at North Grafton, and we're just about at that point. I think we'll see it over the next couple of days, which would trigger additional restrictions. We would go down to one day per week for nonessential watering. And that is in place for seven days. And just to talk a little bit about the nonessential watering, which I think we're all familiar with, it's irrigation of lawns via automatic irrigation systems or sprinklers, filling swimming pools, washing vehicles, except at a commercial car wash, washing exterior building surfaces, parking lots, driveways, or sidewalks. Some of the uses that are allowed during those restrictions are irrigation to establish a new lawn in May and September, irrigation of public parks and recreation fields before 9:00 and 5:00, irrigation of gardens, flowers, and ornamental plants by means of handheld hose or drip irrigation, and irrigation of lawns by means of handheld hose. Next slide, Taylor. So I just wanted to show the current stream flow conditions. This is this year, and as you see, we're hitting the lowest point now at 2.19 cubic feet per second. It's at 2.09 as of the end of the day today. So we see that coming over the next couple of days, with no real significant rain in sight, maybe some thunderstorms, but not the, you know, several days of rain to give us sufficient water. Take a next slide, please. And we look back, and the last time we implemented additional water use restrictions was 2016. That was not only a drought, but I think we also had some source concerns here. So on the left is the stream flow data from June 1st, 2016, to August 30th. And you'll see, you know, in June, July, it really plummeted to almost nothing, almost dried up. And then it slowly went back up, and I just kind of put those two graphs side by side to show you just what we're looking at. Next slide, Taylor. So this is a, it's actually a picture of our SCADA system of all of our wells, and I've included some data here from the beginning of June, and then from a few weeks ago to today, and we're watching, you know, all of our drawdowns just to slowly go down. We're in good shape, you know? I did a newsflash over the weekend, say, we're meeting our demand, but, you know, as the heat continues and the drought gets worse, we're certainly getting concerned, and we think it'd be a good time to consider what the E E A recommended in terms of banning the nonessential outdoor watering, which is essentially, next slide, Taylor, is irrigation by means of automatic systems, or, you know, sprinklers connected to hoses, and really going to handheld watering only. And this is from 2016. Prohibit filling of swimming pools or adding more than two inches of water to an existing filled pool would be prohibited. Using tildings waiting pools would be allowed. We would ban lawn sprinkler use, as I was mentioning, automatic or manual lawn sprinklers. But outdoor watering via handheld device would be allowed for vegetable or flower gardens, shrubbery, trees, and lawn areas. And that would be kind of the step to take now, and we'll continue to watch and monitor, and then, you know, if we need to move into a full outdoor water ban, that may be something we want to consider.
So, just for clarification, you can water a lawn with a handheld device? Can't use the sprinklers? A sprinkler in an ground system?
Right.
Okay. So it's almost a complete ban, but not there yet.
You tend to use a lot less water when you're holding the hose and you're, you know, rather than setting a sprinkler and walking away for a period of time.
You've never seen my grandkids, but, yeah, right. I just wanted to be clear. So we have one more level we could go to.
It would be a complete, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted a question. I'll open up the board. The tank levels are holding up okay?
Yes, so most days over the last few weeks, our plant's running 24 hours a day, but they are recovering overnight really well. So, like I said, you know, supply-wise, we're okay. You know, we're meeting our demand, and, you know, things are running well. We're certainly concerned.
Questions, members of the board? No? Mr. Sami?
Two quick questions. What would be the mode of communication for this?
So I would envision, newsflash, probably some variable message boards that you see on the side of the road where people drive by, and that seems to be effective, and then perhaps code red. I think it's a serious enough issue that would warrant, you know, really getting the word out there to folks that if we can conserve, it will make a big difference in our water system and in the environment.
Okay, thank you. And one follow-up, by any...
Sure.
Totally unrelated question. So when the water table recedes, presumably when this happens, I know no new manganese comes in the system, but does that tax our water treatment plant more because we're going deeper in the ground to get the water? Is there any change in that as a result of drought-like conditions?
I mean, that'd be, it's hard to say, mainly because the plant, when we had the drought before, our wells, we have a different water system than we did before, and we weren't treating for manganese before. I don't believe the manganese levels are pretty consistent throughout the water column. We may actually have an issue with maybe some of the heavier compounds that we would draw from that we saw similarly in 2016. We're not at that level yet, but some of the heavier compounds, which are at the lower side of the aquifer, we may be starting to draw from. But right now, with water columns still fairly decent inside our wells, that we're not seeing that at this point. And the plant operators continuously monitor the plant anyway, so change dosages as necessary. I mean, they're constantly monitoring that.
Thank you.
And just to add to that, that's a great question. So we track the runtimes on our filters, and we know how long, you know, we get between backwashes, and we haven't seen much of a change, but we'll, time will tell as the summer goes on.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, Mr. Holland?
May I ask a question? So along with, we have the manganese filtration system for our water, but I understand hexvalen chromium is a heavier compound, so that's something that with droughts, when we're drawing from deeper parts of our wells, would that be a concern? And when is our next scheduled test? I know it is, I believe it's quarterly that it gets sent out, so just curious if you know when the next one is.
So our last test was at the beginning of June. We're going to do it at the beginning of August.
Okay.
So it'll be next week, and we typically have results within a week.
Okay.
So, and we'll do all of our sources.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Muzikar, anything?
I have no questions.
Okay. So do you need a vote to impose these additional water use restrictions as you outline, right?
Yes.
So, can we have a motion to effect?
Motion to approve the resolution for additional water use restrictions effective July 27th, 2022 through September 30th, 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? There being none, okay. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, if I could comment.
I'm sorry.
I just want to comment, I have a background in watershed management, water resources, and this, the water use restrictions seem like a really inconvenience sometimes, but it really makes an incredible difference in our water supply. So, you know, it really is something that people should take seriously and do their best to limit their water use. Thank you.
I know we have another, we have the hearing, but this is only going to take a minute, this next, it's Item 9, so why don't we do that?
Okay.
So, you don't have to hang around. And then we'll get to... So do you want, this is to act on a road closure request for some work that you're doing, our contract is doing on Prospect. So do you want to tell us about that?
Yes, so as part of our inflow infiltration investigations, we camera inspect all of our sewer lines in different sections of town, and during our recent inspections in this area of Prospect Street, the camera crew identified a issue with a water main and a connection to a service, and it's actually, is a large void...
Sewer line.
A sewer line, excuse me, sorry, sorry, too many things. So, large issue with the sewer line where the service connects to the main, and it's allowing 720 gallons of inflow during, you know, when the groundwater is high. So we'd like to get in there and have it repaired before we have a failure and have sewer backups and an emergency. It is a complex repair where the sewer line is about 14 feet deep, so expect to, you know, at least a few days out there, but we've asked for four, just to be safe and have enough time to do the work safely and complete.
Okay, and as you always do, coordinate with police, fire, all that?
Yeah.
Okay, and start August 1st?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, members of the board?
We're approving it for five days, but you hope it'll be shorter?
Well, yeah, we're hoping for a few days. I've talked with our consultants and the contractor. They've afforded themselves a few days if there's equipment failures or if there's weather, if there's weather challenges. Maybe we'll get rain, which would, you know, which would be fantastic, but...
On one side, but on the other, yeah.
So...
Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
How would this be communicated? Would there be, like, you know, we had an electronic billboard at South Street when we closed that, would it be a similar...
No, it's up at Prospect, so...
Right, right.
But you do a code red for that area, right?
So we'll do, we do news flashes, code red, and then we'll, the highway help us get a few variable message boards up. So it is a very well-traveled road, so anything we can do to divert traffic will make it a lot easier, so, yeah, we'll get those up.
Okay.
And one reason we do want to do it now is so we do it before school starts.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, you're not going to have a lot of time to get the message boards out here.
Correct.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, you have a motion?
Move to approve the road closure at 108 Prospect Street from August 1st to August 5th, 2022, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Second.
Okay, we have motion in the second. Any further discussion? There being none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll jump back to Item 7. We have a public hearing with Eli Carrick on behalf of the Carrick Family, Inc., DBA 7-Eleven regarding an application for a transfer of the Section 15 Package Store Wine and Malt Beverage License from AG United Incorporated, DBA 7-Eleven, to Carrick Family, Inc. Would you like to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you just like to introduce yourself for the record and tell us what you're doing?
Okay, this is Jahan Wasif. I'm representing AG United, Inc. And before we start anything, I would like to thank every single person in the Shrewsbury town, the board, every single person with no exception. They make my life very easy doing the business in Shrewsbury for 14 years. I was honored to be in Shrewsbury, to live in Shrewsbury, my business in Shrewsbury, and my kids get graduated from high school in Shrewsbury, too. So thank you so much for everything you're doing for everybody to make their life easy. The only reason we are selling our business, it's a health condition, that's why we saw we're selling the business to Eli, and I'm so happy and so glad that he's a Shrewsbury resident, too. It's a very nice family, and I think it's going to be a still family store for everyone in Shrewsbury.
Right.
Hi, my name is Eli Carrick. I live right on West End Street, across the street from the store, and my kids go to Shrewsbury schools as well, Baden School and High School. And, you know, I've known Jahan for a little while, and there was a health issue, and we talked about it, and then I said, sure, I'll be glad to just, you know, I'll have a business near where I live, and I love the town, and I live in the town, and that's basically why I decided on, you know, buying a business and staying around.
Okay. Questions from members of the board? So let me ask you, I was not going to change, nothing's really changing except for...
Everything's exactly the same. Exactly.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Well, before we close the hearing, I didn't go in there a lot, but every time I went there, I was treated well, so thank you for the great job you did. I didn't realize you were there that long. It's unfortunate that you had to leave under those circumstances, but wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And wish you good luck as you move forward, assuming we vote for the license because we haven't closed the hearing yet, but anyways. So if there's no other questions or comments, oh, this is a public hearing, is anybody in the audience would like to be heard on this? Okay, there being none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Do we need to move to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, then motion in the second to close the public hearing. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay. So now, what is the pleasure of the board?
Okay, motion to approve Carrick Family, Inc., DBA 7-Eleven's application for a transfer of the Section 15 Package Store Wine and Malt Beverages License from AG United Incorporated, Inc., DBA 7-Eleven. Second.
Okay, we have motion in the second. Any further comments? No? Okay, and all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm still going to be around. I'm not going to miss you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business is to review an act on a one-day alcohol license request in Joe Yosef's St. Mary's Seric Orthodox Church, one and... in Joe Joseph St. Mary's Seric Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive for the following events, a wedding on Saturday, July 30th, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and church picnic on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Okay. Next item is to review and act on the address change request for 8 Hazel Avenue pursuant to the Board of Selectment Policy, number 29. We've gotten correspondents from the town departments that say they have no problem with this request, so are there any questions or would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Next item of business is to act and sign the orders of taking for Commerce Road and a portion of Lake Street. These are streets that requested to be made public. They, they met the criteria. They did meet, everything's still good, Mr. Holland, right? On Commerce and?
Yes.
Okay. In town meeting, voted, so now it's, now we need to act to sign the orders, so. Any comment or questions on this before we vote? If not, entertain a motion.
Do we need separate motions for each order since there are two separate documents, or can we do both?
I think you could take both as a sample, they're, they're identical.
All right. Move to sign the orders of taking for Commerce Road and portion of Lake Street.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. The next order of business is to review and act on the intermunicipal agreement with Westboro for inspection services. This gets renewed periodically. We're being asked tonight for a 24-month extension, which would end on June 30th, 2024, right? Okay. So, any questions or discussion? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just a technical question, so to, just, just the term that's changing?
Yes.
And then the, the term of the document says that the, may be extended by mutual agreement of the parties for successive one-year terms, so.
So we'll, we'll change that as well. We need to put a, you know, fresh document together for your signature, so that page isn't available tonight, but, you know, the only thing that's changing with the term, and Westboro is in agreement to change it for a two-year agreement, so the full authority lie within both boards, so.
So, or we take, the resolution could be that we agree to approve it for two success, so you don't have to change it, just that we approve two successive one-year terms upfront.
Sure.
So you don't have to change anything.
Okay. Either way, sure.
Yeah, okay, not a big deal, I just.
Okay. So, I hope you need a motion to that effect.
I think the, the technical thing is move to, if you don't mind, I'll take a crack at this.
I, I would.
So to, to move to approve an, an extension of the intermunicipal agreement with Westboro for two successive one-year terms commencing on July 1st, 2022, and ending on June 30th, 2024.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Okay. Item 14 is to review unauthorized payment for the FY23 Mass Municipal Association Annual Dues, which is $5,441. Any questions, comments? No?
Moved off.
No, I was just going to say MMA does, does a good job for us, so I think it's worth the money. Anyways, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Say move to authorized payment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Item 15 is to review an act on Amendment 7 to the intermunicipal agreement for the construction and operation of the Westboro Treatment Plant. We're only voting on the amendment, on Amendment 7, correct, Mr. Mizuka?
Yes.
So, so do, we don't, do you want to go over what we're doing?
Mr. Holland, maybe be a little more concise than I would be.
Good evening, Jeff Holland, DPW Director. So Amendment 7 to the IMA on the construction operation of the Westboro Treatment Plant is to change the title of the current general manager or of the treatment plant. So when the plant in the agreement was originally made, the individual had to be a professional engineer licensed in the Commonwealth, which, and also was, happened to be the town engineer for the town of Westboro. That title has carried forward. The same person is in that position. However, over time, less and less engineering work is being done in that role, to the point where now it's more of a liaison between their consulting engineer and the board, and no longer it does engineering work for the board. The individual is in the process of retiring, and they have solicited people to, to apply for that job and have been unsuccessful in terms of finding a, a professional engineer for that role. The role only is 10 to 20 hours a week at best, and it's mainly to prep the board on the agendas, go over any information that they receive from their consulting engineers and their operators. So they, the board strongly, Westboro Treatment Plant Board strongly believes that it does not need to be an engineer, as does the current general manager. So in discussions with both the town of Westboro engineer, or DPW and myself, we both concur that the position does not warrant being an engineer, but just more of an administrative type person, and they think they'll get better odds of obtaining a part-time person for this role.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Samia?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. So did I hear right that the engineer administrator used to need to be a resident in Westboro?
Used to be the town engineer for Westboro.
Okay.
Which the original agreement said that that's what that position must be, an employee of the town of Westboro, and it worked out. We act, so we actually, while that we were working on the current IMA with Westboro, we also looked at, well, is it possible for the town of Shrewsbury could offer a member of our engineering staff as that position? And we, we felt that it was not necessarily warranted for, for that. It would, it would have to be where they would still be employed by the town of Westboro, so couldn't be doing the work during town of Shrewsbury normal hours, but their meetings are during the day, so if it was, they would have to figure out a way that that person would work instead of 8:00 to 4:30, might work on Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month, from 10:00 to 6:30 or something. And it, and the amount of work and requirements does not warrant a professional engineer.
Okay, thank you.
That, the way that treatment plant operation set up, that's, Blackstone is, is like a separate entity, right? From, it's not part of Worcester.
That is correct.
Right. So the, the towns that are in it, they're members of it, but it's a separate organization, right?
That is correct.
But that one's got a weird setup.
Yeah, so they're governed by the Westboro Treatment Plant Board.
Yeah.
But all of the funds go through the town of Westboro.
Right.
Even though the town of Shrewsbury has 60% of the flow and Westboro's got 35, it still is Westboro. Everything goes through Westboro.
Yeah. Yeah, we got some interesting stories about that, but we get along with that.
Yeah.
Anyways, okay, so could I have a motion to, are we approving the amendment, accepting the amendment, approve the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve Amendment 7?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Might as well stay there for a second because we got a question.
Yeah, just in case.
Item 16 is to review an act on acceptance of a sidewalk easement located at 136 Old Mill Road. Mr. Holland, just want to explain that quickly.
Just briefly, a building permit was filed for a property on Old Mill Road just to the north of the dam, but it's on the west side of Old Mill. And if you've driven just over the bridge, you see that there's a foundation being built. While doing the stormwater permit, they did a full survey and found that the existing sidewalk for Old Mill Road is entirely on, or a good portion of it is on the property itself. The sidewalk cannot be moved just because of the location of the road, the dam, et cetera. And so the easiest thing to do in working with town council is to, for that, to the owners, to provide us with an easement, a permanent easement for, so, for, so the sidewalk can stay on the property.
Any questions? Okay. All right, so, you have a motion to accept the easement, sidewalk easement on 136 Old Mill Road?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If you have none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a correspondence item. It's an email dated July 18th from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the 4.3 billion Economic Development Bill that was passed in Boston. And Mr. Mizuka, was that signed into law? Or has it been signed into law yet?
It has not been signed into law yet.
Okay. I was, I get, I get confused on that. I didn't, I didn't think it was, but if it, if it does get signed into law, Representative Kane and Senator Moore were able to get $50,000 into that bill for Shrewsbury Youth and Services to help them continue implementing the Commonwealth of, across the Commonwealth of the National Council of Behavioral Health, Youth Mental Health First Aid Program, $69,000 for the town of Shrewsbury for the purchase of new voting machines, and $25,400 to the town of Shrewsbury for firefighter physical examinations. Hopefully those will stay in that bill. And item 18 is an email dated July 19th from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding FY23 state budget, which I don't think the governor has signed that one yet either, right?
I don't know if the governor signed it.
Well, there's a lot in it. We, we just have to wait and see how it shakes out at the local level, right? We have Kerry's to you estimates, but until he signs it and, and he either does or doesn't do his line item vetoes, we don't really know what the final thing is going to be. But anyways, it looks positive. So is there anything else that comes, to come before the board in open session? If you have none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.[1782.83]